I'd like to welcome back all those in Harrisaw to the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners back from recess and lunch. We will pick up with our agenda items of item seven on Public Works, which is a continuing public hearing of Department File 509 PA 2305452/05454. In the matter of a request for a major plan amendment to amend the county rural comprehensive plan, RCP, to add a quarry site to the Lane County inventory of significant mineral and aggregate sites, and to authorize mining and processing pursuant to Oregon Administrative Rules OAR 660-023-0180. Two, to amend the RCP to redesignate land from Forest F to Natural Resource Mineral NR: M, and rezone that land from non-impacted forest land F1 Zone and impacted forest land F2 Zone to Quarry and Mine Operations, QM Zone. And three, to end a request for a site review for the proposed mining operations pursuant to Lane Code 16.2574A through J. And we have Taylor Carsley, our expert from our Land Management Division with us. And so we're going to now formally open this continued public hearing planning on action file 509 PA 2405452, 509-PA 24-05454. I'm David Lovell, Chair of the Lane County Board of County Commissioners. Today's date is January 28, 2025, and it is 1:32 PM. This is a quasi-judicial continued hearing on property owner initiative type four application to add a new quarry site to the inventory as described earlier, to amend the RCP to redesignate the land from Forest F to Natural Resource, and to rezone that land from non-impacted forest land F1 Zone and impacted forest land F2 Zone to Quarry and Mine Operations, QM Zone, and a request for a site review for the review of the proposed mining operations to Lane Code 16.2574A through J. I've got more to read, so bear with me, please. This is a lot to take care of, and your patience and attention is appreciated. Thank you. This is a continuing public hearing on the matter introduced on October 15, 2024. At that time, staff provided a report to the, on the application and presented the Planning Commission and staff recommendation for denial of the application. Because an ordinance is not required for denial, staff did not provide an ordinance for board review. The Board held the public hearing on October 15 and voted to leave the record open for the submission of additional evidence and testimony. The purpose of this meeting is to deliberate on the application based on the record as amended during their extended open record period. At the end of the October 15 meeting, the Board did not technically close the hearing and move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain. Today's meeting is for deliberation only, and no testimony will be taken. Therefore, before beginning deliberations, the Board will vote to close the public hearing. If the Board after deliberations chooses to tentatively deny the application, staff will be prepared to return with an order and the necessary findings to come before the Board on a date and time certain. If the Board chooses to tentatively approve, then the staff will prepare an ordinance with the necessary findings to come back before the Board on a date and time certain. For quasi-judicial hearings, state law and county code require that I notify the applicant and participants of the procedures we will follow and of the specific statutory notices. The order of the proceedings will begin with a vote to formally close the public hearing. We will then hear a staff report and presentation by LMD staff Taylor Carsley prior to the Board's deliberations. Deliberations are a time for the commissioners to discuss among themselves the evidence and testimony heard and determine if the applicable approval criteria have been satisfied. When deliberations have concluded or as part of the deliberations, commissioners may make a motion. Staff have provided motion options for the Board's use. The applicant bears the burden of showing that the proposal satisfies plan amendment, rezoning, and site review criteria cited in the agenda cover memo and attachments. Mr. Carsley, could you please read the list of the applicable substantive criteria as listed in the ACM, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The applicable criteria include Oregon Administrative Rule 660-023-0180, Lane Code 16.257 Subsection 4, Lane Code 16.400, Lane Code 16.252, Lane Code 12, Chapter 12, .100.050, Lane Code 16.216 Subsection 6 through 8, and Lane Code 15.800.030.
Great, thank you very much. ORS 197.7975 provides that failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to LOBA based on that issue, LOBA meaning Land Use Board of Appeals. ORS 197.7963 provides that failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The Board's decision will be the final local decision appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. So we come to the portion of the proceedings where we will look at commissioner disclosures. At this time, commissioners must disclose any ex parte contact. In this particular situation, there have been a number of individuals that provided public comment, both written and oral, that technically constitute ex parte contacts. This includes but is not limited to the letters submitted from Brian Kutchen, Mayor of Oak Ridge, through the Board's public comment portal. In your disclosures, we need to refer to the public comments generally in blanket fashion and provide any other ex parte contacts you might need to disclose. So at this point, let's take these one at a time just for simplicity. Commissioners, and I'll start from my left and go to the right. Is there any substance circumstances or parties to such communication that need to be disclosed? Commissioner Buck?
This will be similar to the last time, which is as the commissioner from the district that this represents. I have, in the past, received comments from those folks that live there, and I have, with county councils' help, have always replied with a standard reply saying that I cannot engage because it is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and refer them to Mr. Carson.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Yes, there's been a lot of emails that I have received, comments that I have received that I have not responded to. There was public comment this morning that we all heard, and a couple of emails that we received today that we all received. No response.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Mr. Carsley, sorry. I said his name wrong. I apologize.
Commissioner Trigger?
No ex parte communication or contact, other than, as previously stated by my colleagues, any emails or calls I might receive. I pass them along to the appropriate staff member.
Thank you. Commissioner Farr?
I have none, other than, as my previous, as previously revealed by my colleagues, the public process.
Thank you. And I have no ex parte contact except for the emails disclosed and responded to appropriately by staff for their, for their review. The second thing that I'd like to ask each commissioner, too, is to state whether you can render a fair and impartial decision. I'll start with, again, Commissioner Buck.
I do believe I can do a fair and impartial decision. I do want to disclose that Mr. King did give a campaign contribution to me probably seven years ago now, but I don't think that that will impede my regular decision-making.
Vice Chair?
Yes, I can make an impartial decision.
Thank you. Commissioner Trigger?
Yes, I make my decision based solely on what is in the record and can make an unbiased and impartial decision on this matter.
Thank you. Commissioner Farr?
Yes, I can make an impartial, unbiased decision. Ed King was on the Board of Directors of Foodville Lane County when that Board of Directors hired me as the Executive Director of Foodville Lane County in 2004.
Thank you. I, too, can be fair and impartial. Mr. King did donate to my campaign. He is considered a friend of mine. We have not spoken for the two years since I've been in office because of this particular case, and I can also be fair and unbiased in this matter. Now, I will ask the commissioners to disclose any personal knowledge, bias, prejudgment, or personal interest, actual conflicts of interest, or potential conflicts of interest. So what I'm asking here is if there's any personal knowledge, bias, or prejudgment, or personal interests, or actual or potential conflicts. Commissioner Buck, please.
In my previous statement, I mentioned about the campaign contribution, but otherwise none.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair?
I have none.
Thank you. Commissioner Trigger?
Just with the exception, as previously mentioned, I also received a campaign contribution in my first run, not in my recent reelection campaign, and it does not influence my decision on this matter.
Thank you. Commissioner Farr?
Thank you. I have received campaign contributions also from Mr. King. It will not influence my decision in this matter.
As previously disclosed, I, too, have had contributions, and it should not, and will not affect my bias or my conflicts of interest. I have none of those either. Public official is met with an actual conflict, and the public official participates in the action, that would affect the financial interest of the official, the official's relative or a business within that official, which that official or relative of the official is associated. That's also a conflict. A public official is met with a potential conflict of interest when the public official participates in an action that could affect the financial interest of the official, a relative of that official, or a business with which the official or the relative of that official is associated. So, one more question, commissioners. Does any commissioner need to disclose personal knowledge? Hang on, because that is a question that's been repeated, so we're going to strike that there. We're moving on to the applicant, and those in attendance are allowed at this point to rebut any of the disclosures heard, if any, and to challenge the qualification of any commissioner based on bias, prejudgment, or conflict of interest. Would anyone like to rebut what they've heard or challenge the qualification of one of the commissioners? Seeing none in Harrisaw, yes, I'd like to ask if there's anyone online with their hand raised, if they have any objections to challenge the qualifications of any of the commissioners?
We do not have anyone joining us virtually.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving down to close the public hearing, the record was closed on December 2, 2024, at the end of the Board's prescribed extended open period, but the record hearing was not closed. The Board will now consider closing the public hearing for the purpose of deliberating on the current record. So at this time, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing and begin deliberations.
Chair of motion?
Yes.
I would like to close the public hearing and begin deliberation.
Great. Any second to that? Thank you. It's been moved by Vice Chair to close the public hearing at this time and begin deliberation, seconded by Commissioner Farr. I'll call for the vote, means this is not a roll call vote. All those in favor signify with an aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Pass is 5-0. Thank you very much. Mr. Carsley, would you please introduce the documents that you have, sir, before us, and then provide the staff with your report and presentation at this time?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So the records before you are the full record for this application dating back to July of 2023, and this includes the materials submitted during the extended open record period. And if you'll bear with me, I'm just pulling up the presentation. All right. So good afternoon, commissioners. Again, for the record, this is Taylor Carsley, staff planner for the Land Management Division, assigned to the old Hazel Dell Quarry Proposed Plan Amendment. With me is Ann Davies from the Office of County Council. So in October, I provided a pretty thorough outline of the components of this application and how they specifically address the applicable approval criteria. Today, I hope to provide a more punctuated presentation. We have a lot to cover, though, so I'll ask that you please bear with me while I get through, you know, all of the different components of this application. I also want to preface by reminding the Board how complex this application is, so thank you in advance for bearing with me while I provide this presentation and answer questions later. Sorry about this. I have a PDF instead of a PowerPoint. So, so today, we're going to talk about the application itself, the request. We're going to go over summary of the extended open record and the materials submitted during that time. Just a summary of that information, we will review the applicable approval criteria again in a more truncated version, and we'll get into recommendations and next steps with this application. So as a reminder, the requests here are three different approvals necessary to use the site for mineral and aggregate processing. This includes the addition of 46 acres to the county's significant mineral and aggregate inventory. It includes a land use designation from Forest to Natural Resources Mineral and a zoning map, a rezone from forest lands to Quarry and Mine Operations, a QM Zone, and it also includes a site review for mining. So these images are just to orient us again. On the left, we have the site east of the city of Oak Ridge. On the right, you can see the proposed land use designation and rezone in blue, so that's the proposed Quarry and Mine Operations Zone. You can also see the black dashed line that represents a 1,500-foot impact area. So for context, I want to remind the Board of where this application is now in the process. The Board held a hearing on October 15, after which it elected to hold the record open for a designated amount of time to allow for additional evidence and testimony to be submitted. This is kind of a summary of that open record period, and we'll dive into each of the different components of that, of that record period. So looking forward, we're going to ask that the Board deliberate on the applicable criteria. We will review this criteria again in a little bit more detail, and then staff would ask that the Board make a tentative decision based on those deliberations and information in the record moving forward, after which staff can return with an ordinance or order and appropriate findings. So the first open record period was an opportunity for any party to submit new evidence and argument on any issue that is relevant to the application. Both the applicant and parties in opposition participated in the open record period. Most of the applicant's submittals were previous record materials dating back to 2016 that respond to concerns surrounding groundwater impacts, stormwater runoff, and disturbances affecting the old municipal landfill on site. The applicant's other items were several 2018 reports from Natural Resource Solutions LLC, which responded to testimony from the opponent's biologist at that time. The applicant also submitted a big game management plan authored by a consultant called Wetlands and Wildlife LLC. This is dated October 2024, and we'll discuss this in a little bit more detail shortly. Opponents submitted a large amount of material on a variety of topics that argued the application should be denied, and the opponents address many, if not most, of the conflicts that the Goal Five rule allows us to consider. Four response submittals were provided into the record, and the response period was limited to responding to evidence that was submitted during the first open record period. Submittals included letters from the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and county staff. Most of the response materials centered around the applicant's 2016 material on the big game issue that the Board did not consider supported approval of the application in 2021. And so the response materials also focused on the applicant's big game management plan that had not been submitted until the first extended open record period. County staff and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife identified significant issues with the big game. issues with the big game management plan and its ability to be implemented in a functional or clear and objective manner, and again, I'll talk a little bit more about that. So the last period of the open record period was the applicant's final rebuttal. The applicant submitted two separate submittals, one on November 25. That includes 22 letters and memos from 2016, materials that were submitted during the old record period that are introduced here in this record. The December 2 rebuttal includes a general summary of the applicant's arguments with a substantial focus on the big game issue and a critique of staff's response memo that was submitted. So this is a reminder of the applicable approval criteria. I have the Goal Five rule, the Oregon Administrative Rule, in bold, and we will go over this in a little bit more detail. Here, the Goal Five rule is broken out into the six steps. It's five or six steps, depending on a few things, which we'll go over, but these are the basic steps in order to follow for the board to determine whether or not to allow mining and the associated plan amendment. The board will have to address these steps in order to adopt findings, and we will visit each of these in turn. So the first step of the Goal Five rule is to determine significance of the proposed resource. The application appears to demonstrate that the resource is significant based on its quantity, quality, and location. I'm going to just briefly summarize these slides and not necessarily go into some of them in detail, because we've done that in the previous hearing. So the second step of the Goal Five rule is to determine the impact area around the mining boundary in which to identify conflicts. The default impact area is 1,500 feet unless factual information indicates significant potential conflicts beyond this distance. The Planning Commission found that this impact area is not sufficient, and opponents have argued that the impact area should be expanded for many different reasons, such as noise, dust dispersion, and groundwater impacts, just to name a few. Staff is, however, unaware of how much the impact area should be expanded by and what reasons specifically support expansion of a specific or designated distance, because evidence and testimony does not appear to articulate this in detail. A possible exception is evidence for expanding the impact area based on 2018 submittals from the opponent's biologist regarding the loss of elk habitat within 2,500 feet of the mining boundary. The applicant submitted 2018 materials as well during the extended open record period that responds to this, the opponent's biologist. So we're sort of left in a situation where we have competing evidence and argument on the need to expand the impact area. We can certainly talk about that more. So step three involves the identification of conflicts within the impact area. The applicant has identified existing and approved land uses that will adversely be affected by the proposed operations as the 16 dwellings that exist within a 1,500-foot So during the public hearing, we went over each of the conflicts that the Goal Five rule allows us to consider in quite a bit of detail, and so this is an abbreviated list of those conflicts. And I should say, we probably don't need the subheadings, the bold subheadings on this slide, because both the applicant and opponents have identified a number of potential conflicts that would exist without minimization measures. That's to say that the board can find conflicts would exist without minimization measures due to a little bit of a laundry list here. They include dust, noise, other discharges such as diesel emissions and stormwater, and also conflicts to local roads, in addition to other significant Goal Five resources such as the Riparian Corridor associated with Salmon Creek and major big game habitat. Much of the disagreement in the record is if identified conflicts are in fact minimized. However, it is true that certain conflicts may not be able to be considered in the context of the Goal Five rule, such as impacts to historical or cultural resources at the mining site, at the mining site specifically for reasons that we discussed last time. During the public hearing, open space and scenic areas were discussed, as the application had not substantively addressed potential conflicts to the Willamette Highway-Salt Creek corridor. As far as staff is aware, this was not addressed after the public hearing during the open record period in substance. Staff believe that the board could reason that significant conflicts do exist to the surrounding corridor as a result of impacts to the mining area itself due to the nature of scenic areas, you know, being seen from inside the impact area. However, the board could also reason that because ground impacts will be occurring within the mining area itself and not the surrounding impact area, any conflicts to that scenic corridor are less than significant, or said another way, are minimized. So step four of the Goal Five rule is to determine reasonable and practicable measures to minimize the conflicts identified. The applicant contends that all significant conflicts are minimized with such measures. However, the Planning Commission considered that conflicts were not minimized, and materials submitted consistently from opponents agree with that. As I discussed on the last slide, there is a lot of competing testimony about the applicant's minimization plan. Several conflicts appear to be minimized by virtue of the applicant representing that safe harbor thresholds will be met, such as with the generation of noise, dust, airblast and vibrations, and diesel emissions, because a lot of these conflicts can be minimized by meeting standards and thresholds set by different agencies such as DEQ. The board may wish, however, to address concerns related to the monitoring plans associated with some of these conflicts and emissions, such as with noise and airblast and vibrations, to find that minimization is in fact actually achieved. Several amended conditions were attached to the ACM, not as gospel necessarily, but to illustrate how the monitoring plan could potentially be improved to ensure the operation's compliance with those noise compliance thresholds are met if the board approves the application. The board may wish to discuss amending conditions in a similar way if it has decided to tentatively Qualified experts for the applicant have also offered measures to minimize conflicts due to stormwater runoff, conflicts to local roads, and other Goal Five resources such as water quantity concerns. There is valid oppositional testimony critiquing evidence found in the application's assessment of those conflicts and minimization measures. However, staff is unaware of substantial qualified expert evidence from opponents that directly refute many of the application's minimization measures, except perhaps with regard to conflicts to major big game habitat. The applicant has not proposed measures that would effectively minimize displacement and loss of habitat to major big game to a less than significant level. The applicant has also not addressed the board's 2021 concerns regarding consequences to foraging, overwintering, fawning, and increased take of wildlife as a result of additional elk tags being issued for private property damage due to redistribution of elk in the area. Both staff and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife have expressed continued and significant issues with the applicant's minimization measures and their recently submitted big game management plan that was dated October 2024. To reiterate the board's 2021 concerns regarding major big game habitat, these concerns aren't really effectively addressed, notwithstanding that 2024 big game management plan. The Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife has noted that the proposed mitigation measures in the plan failed to adequately address the concerns, including those that I listed before. The plan proposes vague habitat improvements during active mining and in areas where big game will already experience a direct loss of habitat while the mine is active and will already be displaced due to the impacts of mining. ODFW staff also noted that such impacts cannot be minimized by creating habitat in the impact area itself, and this management plan would not provide for safe refuge for wildlife affected by mining operations. As noted, the applicant's new big game plan does not contain management objectives that are clear, specific, measurable, time-bound, or functional in providing for effective mitigation. So a possible step five is if identified conflicts cannot be minimized, the board must determine the economic, social, environmental, and energy consequences of either allowing, limiting, or not allowing mining at the site, using these three considerations for the EC findings. Staff do recommend that the board conduct an EC analysis based on conflicts to major big game habitat. The board would skip this step and not conduct EC findings if they find that all conflicts So if the board does determine that all conflicts are minimized, then it must allow for mining and approve the PAPA, including the addition of the site to the county's mineral and significant list of mineral and aggregate resources. If the board determines that all significant conflicts are not minimized, it must conduct an EC, as I discussed, and decide whether to allow, limit, or not allow mining. If mining is allowed, regardless of whether an EC is conducted or not, the board must nonetheless conduct an EC to determine whether to allow, limit, or prevent new conflicting uses within the impact area of the mining site. So there's a bit of a second step there with allowing mining. As I note here, the board may wish to consider limiting or preventing conflicting uses within the impact area of the mining site on the applicant's property to the extent that such uses are found to interfere with management objectives proposed by the applicant in their big game management plan. So we have a flow chart here which attempts to illustrate the Goal Five process and attempts to help the board navigate deliberations through the Goal Five process. I'm happy to come back to this slide as needed. As previously stated, the board can likely find that the application is consistent with the site review criteria and statewide planning goals, as the subject Goal Five rule is the process that implements Goal Five. So we're left with recommendations and next steps. The purpose of this meeting is to deliberate. We have an extensive record here that is weighty, and there's a lot of evidence and testimony contained therein. Staff hopes that the previous flow chart, the decision matrix that was provided in the ACM, and, you know, just general question answering, can help organize the deliberations. After deliberation, it would be recommended that the board take a straw poll and direct staff to return with proper findings that would support, you know, a tentative decision that the board makes. Staff believes evidence in the record supports denial of the application, given that the current record is similar to that of the one in 2021 where the board issued an order for denial. This application is not substantively cured with respect to the primary reason for the board's denial in 2021, which was conflicts to major big game habitat. To the extent that the application is amended, it is done so with a big game management plan that appears to be insufficient and has been responded to in the record with quite a few issues associated with it. So at this point, staff would like to raise the fact that a written objection was filed by the applicant yesterday, and this has been shared with the board. We also have a more recent written objection, I believe, from Sean Malone, and I think that's been shared with the board as well. So at this point, I think in closing, I'd like to thank the board for its attention. I'm more than happy to answer questions as they arise, and thank you for your time.
And thank you, Mr. Carsley. That's no light task in front of you with all those boxes of paper. Your DNA is probably on every single page, and so we appreciate your thoroughness and the way that you've diligently sought the answers and suggestions for the board in this matter, so we appreciate you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Carsley at this point? Yes, Commissioner Farr?
Just a clarification question. There's a lot of lots and lots and lots of pages, date back lots and lots and lots of years, all the way to Oak Ridge and the public hearing that we had in 16, was it, I think? But there's a lot, once again, a lot of information. Staff is recommending denial based upon, and I'm going through the notes that I just wrote down, staff's unaware of substantial qualified opposition on a number of issues, so it boils down to big game habitat. Is that a...
I think that's a fair assessment. I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of quality testimony, you know, from the oppositional standpoint. I think the majority of substantial evidence, though, is submitted by the applicant, and so we don't disregard any testimony submitted by opponents, but, you know, weighing, you know, weighing the evidence, it appears that, you know, substantial evidence supports that many of the conflicts proposed by the applicant are minimized.
So with the exception of, in staff's opinion, and it seems like the Planning Commission's opinion, big game habitat?
That's correct, and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife.
And ODFW. And I have a question regarding big game habitat. You know, I look at a satellite picture of the Oak Ridge. I can look at one right now. Tell me how the footprint of the site is considered versus the vast footprint of big game habitat that surrounds it? How is a small amount, do they consider the fact that it's a tiny amount of property in the middle of the Sayuslo National Forest?
That's a good question, Commissioner. So a lot of, some of the previous testimonies submitted by the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, you could sort of delve into the details of surrounding habitat in that area, and it was noted that surrounding Willamette National Forest lands were not suitable habitat for at least the distribution of elk, as opposed to surrounding private lands around Oak Ridge itself and, you know, in the vicinity. So the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife staff are on record, you know, noting the lack of sufficient habitat in the surrounding lands compared to, you know, private lands around Oak Ridge itself.
In the surrounding lands, so as we drive east from Oak Ridge up towards Salt Creek through the forest, none of that is suitable?
I am not saying that. I'm just saying relative to private lands surrounding Oak Ridge, you know, High Prairie, you know, those lands, you know, downslope of the quarry, ODFW staff commented that those lands are... the quarry, ODFW staff commented that those lands are, you know, much more sufficient elk habitat relative to surrounding Willamette National Forest lands.
And I said Sayuslo, I'm from Tillamook County, our farms in Tillamook, Willamette, indeed, but, so, and I'm just trying to dig through that, how, what seemingly is a relatively small piece of property in what is, you know, the Willamette National Forest and beyond, how it could be such a significant element as to deny a Goal Five resource? So I'm, and I'm, I may come back to that. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you. Question?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Carsley. You're doing a great job. What are we at, 5,000 papers?
Something like that.
Something like that. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you a question, and I don't expect you to have the answer. It's a big question. It's a big number. The piece of F1 ground national forest, the Willamette National Forest, is, do you know what, what that entirety is acreage-wise roughly that that land is touching? Like how much we'd be removing from what number?
Sorry, Commissioner, I don't understand the question. How mu, how much area of Willamette National Forest is adjacent to the subject property?
Yes.
I don't, well, I mean, the national forest extends all the way to the county line to the east, so, you know, that's, you know, it goes all the way to the Cascade Crest, so, but I do not know the answer to that.
Well, I, I spoke with county council first, and I was assured I could look at a zone map or a plot map, and it's almost a million acres. It's 980,000 acres, give or take. So when we're talking about significance, that's kind of a relative number, I suppose.
Lot to think about. Anyone else have any questions or comments for Mr. Carsley? Will we move on? Mr. Carsley, I might have just a few if we're talking math here a little bit, as looking at Commissioner Farr's comments and Vice Chair's comments. If we're looking at, like you said on Slide 2, there was, the actual footprint of the quarry is 46 acres. We're talking entirely about a 200-acre section that Crown Properties owns, but 46 of it is the footprint of the quarry. Is that, is that correct? Am I, am I going in the right direction right off the get-go before I keep going? Okay, thank you.
Correct.
And so then that, that would be on lots, 1,900 primarily and lots 104 according to the map, which is on Page 46 and 48 of the packet. So as I'm looking at, trying to decide what the impact of elk habitat grounds are, if we're rolling back to our 1993 decisions on whether elk habitat land is F1 versus F2, of that 46-acre footprint, there's only 23 acres left of F2 property, or F1 property, excuse me, of that footprint, as way it's, it's all lined out in the map. I was looking at it and trying to figure out, okay, if we're talking that F1 in the past has been largely designated as elk habitat land, off limits to build, all that kind of stuff, my question to myself looking at those maps was, how much of the 46-acre footprint of the quarry is on actual F1 elk habitat lands that we've designated? And from the map, I determined that's about 23 acres. Is my math pretty close?
I'm not familiar offhand. That seems, that seems pretty accurate.
Okay, well, thank you. And in contrast of Vice Chair's comment about how many other acreages are out there, I'm trying to determine whether a 23-acre minus off of big game elk habitat F1 lands is a significant impact. And I'm struggling, I'm not an expert, but I'm struggling to think that 23 acres off of a million acres, give or take, if that's an acceptable number to talk about. I'm just, in my mind, as I'm rolling through this, I'm wondering if that is a significant impact, and if indeed this big game elk habitat is in fact mitigated, because we're only really talking about 23 acres.
If I might add, Chair.
Please.
We are, we're looking at the area within the impact area and not just within the 46-acre mining boundary. In fact, we're, we may be precluded from looking at the mining boundary itself, and so we're looking at sort of the donut surrounding, the donut hole of the, of the mining boundary. So, we're looking at that, that radius of impact area.
Okay, that's fair. And I think also too, did I not, did I hear you say as well that the opponent's trying to determine if that 1,500-foot area, I mean, some of that goes across the river to the west and into the industrial zone of Oak Ridge, is that, did I see some of that approaching into the edge of town?
It, it does encroach a bit into town. I don't think it goes across Salmon Creek. It may barely broach across Salt Creek. It's, I, I'm happy to pull up the aerial again, but...
Okay, well, I'm just trying in my mind to determine if we're talking about a significant impact, or if it's a very minor impact, that the opponents have, haven't proved that it is a significant impact, and the applicant has, based on just what they're talking about as far as acreage, if it's a minimal impact. And so to me, it sounds, just viscerally, it sounds to me like it's a minimal impact, and that would be mitigated in my, in my thinking. So I just wanted to clarify some of my math with you of just what I'm thinking. So that's all I have for the first round. Is there any other questions for Mr. Carsley, if anybody else? Seeing none, we have some deliberations that we need to take care of, some formalities in this, and one of them is what we aforementioned on the Mayor Cutchins of Oak Ridge, his letter. Did you have some, I'm sorry, Vice Chair was saying you had something?
Oh, so sorry. No, I did not have anything specifically.
My apologies. The board has received a letter from Brian Cutchen, Mayor's, Mayor of Oak Ridge, in the form of a public comment and outside of the open record period. The board will need to reject the letter in the form of a motion. At this time, I will entertain a motion to reject this letter from the record. Vice Chair.
Chair, I would like to make a motion to reject the letter from the record.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seeing no second, it dies for lack of second, so it appears that the board will receive the letter from the Mayor of Oak Ridge as part of the record. Is that what we're doing here, Council?
Okay, if that's what the board chooses to do. And it was, it was placed before you in a, in the public setting that it doesn't automatically come in, but if the board chooses to bring that into the record, they can do that. I can talk about the implications of that if you'd like.
At least do, I'd love that, yes.
So, and I was about to get to another matter that is similar, related to the state of the record. So at the last meeting, you, you had your hearing, you heard from a bunch of residents, and you decided to leave the record open for a period of time, so the record was left open for a first open record, second open record period, and then a final rebuttal. And as of, I think it was December 2nd or 4th, 2nd, the record closed at that final rebuttal stage. So the way we've been processing this is as if the record was closed on that date. And so Taylor has received some comments from people that he has not forwarded because they were submitted beyond the time that the record closed. So what we got this morning was the letter from Mayor Cutchen, and so you've decided, I think, that you're going to take that into the record. There was another item that was received. It was an email dated yesterday, and it was a letter from Bill Close, the applicant's representative, framed as procedural objections. So, staff and I conversed whether we thought it was appropriate to also provide that to the board or not, because like the other ones, it was outside the, the record period. So we opted to forward that to the board because it had some procedural-ish type objections. We also forwarded it to Sean Malone. For lack of, given the timing, it was hard to provide it to everybody, which would have been ideal if we weren't like an hour before the hearing was, the meeting was scheduled for. So I just kind of want to summarize this letter and give you options of what you can do with this letter. There's, there's two issues that are arguably procedural objections. One has to do with the status of staff or ODFW as expert witnesses, and the other one is kind of more just a procedural, how are we proceeding with, with the hearing and the open record period and everything. Given, given what I've read in this letter, and I know you have, you have it, and so you could, you have read it, but one of the options that you can do is reject it from the record, like I suggested that you do for the Mayor Cutchen letter. You may choose not to do that. The reason that I would recommend that you just reject it is that there was subsequently a letter from Sean Malone that was responding to this procedural letter, asking for more time to fully respond because he had like 30 seconds to respond to it. The, the two issues in the Bill Close letter, one is that there was new evidence submitted in the staff report, the staff report that you just received last week. Staff and I don't think that's true. That's, so it's kind of, it's, it's a, it's in sheep's clothing as a procedural issue, but it's not really. It's really something that should have been brought up at final rebuttal, and it wasn't. And then the second issue is, is really a preference of how we were proceeding was we were, we were going to be advising that because an ordinance was going to be coming before you, and that ordinance had not been presented to you yet, that you had to have another hearing. So we were going to reopen the hearing following the ordinance and the findings. That is maybe best practice, but not actually required by the charter or by any state law. So what we were proposing is, is legal, is authorized. There's another option that's also, we believe, legal and authorized. So it's up to you to decide how to do that. So my advice to you with regard to the Bill Close letter is that you reject it. I can draft up findings explaining the basis for it being objected to, in writing better than I can right here today, but I'm happy to try to articulate that a little bit better. But the, as far as trying to keep this thing going, the risk in accepting both the Cutchen letter and this letter is that it will then require further open record periods. With regard to the Cutchen letter, I don't think he's really said anything new, but it was definitely testimony that was submitted outside the record period, and it's very possible that the applicant would want to have time to respond to that. So, again, with his letter, it's also kind of, my advice would be to reject it, but it's also okay if you don't, and we'll just deal with what the implications are of that. So.
So if we, if we accept this letter from the Mayor of Oak Ridge, does that also open the can of worms that all of the other letters that we received of an opposition outside of the public hearing zone also have to be included?
Probably would be fair, yeah. I think it's, I think it's of the same kind as those. So, the difference between the Cutchen letter and the Close letter is, his letter goes directly to the substantive approval criteria, whereas the Close letter, at least with regard to one of them, doesn't, one of the issues.
Commissioner Triger.
Thank you. My understanding that a vote to reject the letter, or if a vote to reject the letter fails, or in this case, we didn't receive the support necessary to even call the vote, is that a de facto acceptance into the record? Or is it just that it exists and it has to be declared as ex parte? What is the, I mean, doesn't it make more sense to...
The Cutchen one, I think the fallback is it's not in the record. I wanted you to reject it specifically because I wanted it to be clear that, you know, you had heard about it or seen it this morning, and I wanted to be clear that you were saying, no, it's not in the record. So that's why I did it with that. The Bill Close letter, it's been placed before you, so it's in the record, and so is the Sean Malone one, unless or until you reject it.
Understood. Thank you. Chair Farr.
Thank you. And Council Davis, I think you just explained what is going to be my question regarding the McCutcheon letter. De facto, without a vote, it remains not in the record since it is outside the period. And the Close letter, which is different in nature because of the direct references inside of it, is also outside of the record. So it would be consistent for us to reject, to allow both to just fall outside of the record, we don't have to make motions to accept them or deny them, they're just outside of the record. So we don't really need a motion, they're not in the record.
They were placed before you, though. So I think it'd be safer, maybe you don't need a motion, but something that's placed before the decision maker is in the record unless it's rejected.
Is placed before a legal term?
Yeah, that's, that's, when you're, when you're preparing the record for the Land Use Board of Appeals, everything that's in the record for their purposes is things that are placed before the decision maker.
It doesn't mean it was just placed here before me. It means legally, it was...
Legally, well, placed. We did place it before you by giving it to you, so...
I'm not an attorney, nor have I ever aspired to be one. But I love the terms. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so to be, in our script, it says here that we wanted to make a formal motion to reject this letter. That's where we're at now, correct? Is that what I'm hearing? All right, well, the board received a letter from the applicant dated January 27th alleging procedural objections. Does the, the county council has already addressed this. Does the board wish to make a motion concerning this letter? I guess not. Okay. So that means by default, then these, the letter that Mr. Close and Mr. Malone put before us is now in the record? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, fair enough. We're moving on. Should we move on?
We, we, let me just say something. We, we'll probably be circling back to it at the end. The, the consequence of accepting the Close letter is that you probably, you may need to, well, you've already gotten a response from, from Mr. Malone, but I, I think he has a pretty good argument, but that the time wasn't reasonable for him to respond. So the consequence of accepting the Close letter is that you may need to leave the record open for a period of time for others to respond to that letter.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. And procedurally, Ms. Davis, you, you mentioned that presuming that we are going to ask you to come forward with an ordinance, we have a public, a public record period on the ordinance, or we have a, a public hearing period on the ordinance, you would conceivably reopen the record for that, at which point these letters could be admitted into the...
Yes, yeah, not, it would not be an issue at all if ultimately you decide to have, have another hearing on the ordinance.
Which if we ask for an ordinance, we have to have another hearing. We would need a first reading, second reading, et cetera.
But not a hearing.
But not necessarily a hearing.
Two readings, with the, with the days in between, but the charter does not say that you have to have a hearing on the ordinance.
Thank you.
So I guess the matter before the board is whether we want to talk about this more in public hearing settings or simply in an ordinance setting?
You can certainly also go through the substance and see where you're landing and come back to this, if you want.
All right.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
At the end of this, I may be prepared to make a motion to reject the Close letter, the Malone letter, and all other letters as part of the public, as, as part of the record. That would like to be my...
Yeah, but those, the ones that Taylor has, were never placed before you.
Were never placed before.
So you don't need to reject those.
Is the McCutcheon letter placed before us, or is that someplace out there in...
I, I, I would say it's placed before you.
Very good, thank you, then. Thanks.
Okay, so it sounds to me like we're at a point where either we decide to move on and tentatively discuss whether each board member is on board or not on board to approve or deny this application, and then the straw poll from there we take, and then we may have to come back and revisit these letters being in or out, if that causes complications. Okay, so as we move into the point where we'd like to invite the board to discuss whether to tentatively deny or approve the application, Taylor Carsley has very eloquently adequate that we need to have a five-step determination, that is, determine the significance of the resource. Number two, determine the impact area. Number three, identify any conflicts. Number four, determine any conflicts that are minimized, and if all conflict, conflicts are minimized and mining is allowed, we do not necessarily have to move to step five, which is, step five, identify any remaining conflicts that are not... which is, step five, identify any remaining conflicts that are not minimized, and based on these remaining unminimized conflicts, environment, social, energy, and, and energy, environment, economic, and social, I'll get those all mixed up, the EC will be, analysis must be done. So at this point, I'd like to get kind of the comments from each board member on where they're at concerning the application, and anyone can start, who wants to start? Commissioner Farr, go ahead.
You know, my initial question regarding whether or not the main thing we're looking at is big game, and it's based upon some of the test, some of the information that you gave us, that staff is unaware of substantial qualified, et cetera. So, and I asked you, is big game really what we're talking about here? And if big game is really what we're talking about here, that's the one condition that the planning commission and staff recommends has not been met, the discussion that we've had regarding the physical size of the location based upon the vastness of the national forest. And, you know, I'm looking at how far is it to McCready Springs from that point? How many miles is it through forest all the way to McCready Springs? And that's not even the edge of the Willamette National Forest. So to me, I think that, I, I think that in that all of the other conditions have been met, and the big game issue is the one that we're considering, that is where my thought process is going to be as we move forward in the discussion. Tell me if I'm wrong in that.
Commissioner, so we have, so staff has raised question, and this was included in the ACM, about the monitoring plan for, for noise and air blast and vibrations. So that's a point of consideration as well as the open space and scenic resource. We have a significant goal five scenic resource called the Willamette Highway, Salt Creek Corridor, as the comp plan names it. And, you know, staff isn't, you know, precluding any other issues from being deliberated on, and we, we welcome that, and we want those issues to be vetted. So I, I think what staff is saying is the primary issue appears to be the major big game habitat conflicts, and.
Just a quick follow-up, Chair, then. Regarding the scenic corridor, you'd mentioned that it doesn't really seem to be in the scenic corridor other than from inside the impact zone? Is that, did I hear you correctly on that?
That, that appears to be correct. The, the mapping for the scenic corridor is unclear. What it, there's a description in the Rural Comprehensive Plan that describes the scenic corridor as being east of Oak Ridge and, and going from, you know, essentially encompassing the Salt Creek watershed, as I understand it. And so that would include the mining site itself, since the mining site itself is within the Salt Creek watershed and east of Oak Ridge. The question that I was getting at, I think in, in my presentation, and I went over it pretty quickly, so excuse me, is the fact that the board could look at conflicts to scenic resources in two ways. Perhaps the board could look at, you know, any on-the-ground impacts within the impact area as not occurring because, you know, on-the-ground impacts are only going to be occurring within the mining boundary itself. However, the board could also look at the scenic conflicts or potential scenic conflicts as occurring within the impact area because those on-the-ground disturbances within the mining boundary can be seen from the impact area. So those were the two things I was trying to articulate.
And you did a good job, thank you, and particularly with that explanation. Then let me ask you another question, if I may, regarding the product that is produced. They turn big rocks into little rocks, that's what they do. And the little rocks that they use, if they aren't supplied locally, where do they come from? I mean, are we allowed to, to consider that as a part of the impact, the fact that 26-wheeled trucks would haul them up from the, the stuff up from the Willamette Valley if it weren't produced locally?
So I'll mention that there's testimony in the record about the applicant's economic analysis that discusses to a, a small degree, kind of the supply and demand locally. And there's testimony as well in the record from, I think it's Oak Ridge Sand and Gravel that disputes the applicant's economic analysis. There, there's been a lot of testimony disputing kind of that supply and demand analysis. And so, you know, I, I don't know, staff isn't aware of, you know, the true demand in Oak Ridge, but based on testimony submitted, I understand that there are two rock and aggregate suppliers, or, you know, other quarries in Oak Ridge in the local area.
Okay. Then, okay, to explore that just a little bit, you know, any product, competition is a good way to, to provide product in an area, and lack of competition creates different obstacles for people to acquire the product that's been, that's been, that is necessary for, for, for the project that they're working on. And regarding economic, beyond economic, running 26-wheeled trucks from the Willamette Valley, that's an environmental impact, isn't it? It's also degradation of the roads and, and carbon footprint and all the other things associated with that. So providing the, this heavy stuff that you can't bring in from Canada like timber, you can't ship to Japan like timber, is local, absolutely, completely local. You know, within, you know, 15, 20, 30 miles of where it's produced is where it should be used, generally speaking, to bring it in from outside as a carbon footprint impact. So I'm, I'm thinking about all of this as, as we move forward, is that, you know, the, the goal five resource, do we, does it provide the necessary protection for a resource that potentially is going to have a strong environmental impact regarding bringing in that same product from elsewhere if it weren't produced locally?
Well, I, Commissioner, I would just, again, there, there's quite a bit of testimony that, that speaks to the, you know, lack of local demand for aggregate resource due to the other existing operations in Oak Ridge. You know, part of this, you know, may not be applicable to the goal five rule that, you know, the applicable criteria unless we maybe get into an EC analysis, because there's an economic consideration, you know, social considerations. I mean, different components of the EC findings could address a lot of those concerns. But I just want to be clear that there is evidence, or testimony, I'm sorry, testimony in the record that speak to those concerns, and they speak to the fact that, or the, the argument that there is not a, a strong local demand in Eastern Lane County or in the Oak Ridge area.
Question on that, then. I, I travel through the Salt Creek Tunnel often, and just recently, there was a large paving job there, required a lot of product, a lot of aggregate, I guess. You know, it held me up, I got stopped in traffic a lot of times, it was going on for a long time. Where did that rock come from? Now, I don't know the answer to that. Sure didn't come from a few miles away in Oak Ridge, it came from someplace beyond that, I'm sure. And so, you know, maybe there's not a lot of demand inside the city of Oak Ridge, but we do have roads there, we do have potential floods, we have other reasons that immediate and need for aggregate, which we live in, is all around us, comes, can come up any time, whether it be the Salt Creek repaving, or whether it be railroad grade, or whether it be rebuilding roads that were washed out by a flood nearby Oak Ridge, you know. So aggregate, you know, you can't look at the demand for new buildings and new roads and new driveways as the sole need for aggregate, because it really is the bed of everything that we, that we sit on right here, that we drive on, and that we require to, for our transportation needs, so. Okay, I, I'm, you know, to me, this is all a part of the consideration, is the, is the impact, the, both the economic and the environmental impact and the goal five requirements there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Vice Chair.
Yeah, we've got our five steps here. I will say, I think we all agree that the resource is significant. You know, I'm thinking, as you're talking about two of them being in Oak Ridge, Taylor, there's two of them within five miles of each other out in Junction City, and they're both busy and open, up, up and running. I would say part of the significance of this resource is trucking. I mean, you want to keep rock local, it's, it's heavy, and it, it takes a lot of, a lot of fuel to move it. The impact area, I wasn't, I wasn't really certain, we didn't have a number what, what would get us there, we just said maybe move it out further. We were talking about the 1,500-foot barriers, you know. Noise, air blast vibrations seem to be minimized. And then the, the big game habitat, I was, after you mentioned possibly more harvest and nuisance tags for elk, like what's that, what's that based off of? I mean, what would that, you know, what would that drive, what would that, what would drive that, what would that look like? Do we have any sort of estimates, or we just assume that there's going to be more harvest and nuisance tags out there?
Commissioner, you're asking for quantities of?
Just in, yeah, how do we get to, I mean, I'm skeptical that there, that there would be, but I'm not an elk expert. But with 980,000 acres to a million acres around there, I think they're going to find somewhere else to go.
So the, so ODFW staff, I mean, they've issued, or submitted a number of comment letters with this record, and they include letters that were submitted with the previous record that speak to the displacement conflicts associated with elk moving off-site. And ODFW staff has estimated that the number of private property conflicts and property damage associated with that displacement will increase. I don't have, you know, exact figure or figures on what that looks like, I just don't have quantitative data. Regarding, though, the, the idea of the impact area being insignificant, or, you know, conflicts within that impact area being insignificant due to its size relative to, you know, adjoining national forests, or adjoining, you know, F1 or F2 zoned lands, I'm not sure, you know, if, I'm not sure if the rule supports kind of a finding of insignificance based on adjoining, you know, public lands or the amount of public lands. So that, that might be something more to, to talk about. But in, the reason that came up in, from ODFW staff was in the original biologist's report that was submitted with this application, I think it was dated 2018. ODFW letters in 2021 responded to the contention that the applicant's biologist, you know, claimed, hey, there's plenty of public land surrounding the, the mine and the impact area, and there shouldn't be problems because the elk will just move off into the adjacent national forest. The ODFW response was, you know, kind of directly refuting that, and that's ultimately what the board agreed with in 2021 was that, you know, this adjacent national forest habitat is not suitable relative to adjoining private property. So that was sort of just a direct response to the applicant's biologist, you know, irrespective of, you know, the amount of adjoining public land.
Got it. Quick follow-up, do you, do you know how many nuisance tags they, they issue currently?
I do not.
Lot to think about, commissioners, colleagues, and my hunch is to kind of let us stew just for a minute, not to move too quickly forward, but at this point, we can consider moving forward with a motion if you're prepared. Or if we can sit and think for a lit, a lot to take in, we can have some comments in a minute or two.
As we do this semi-silent period of speculation, you've offered three alternatives for us to move forward. The first is to close the public hearing, deliberate and direct staff to prepare an EC, E, E analysis and draft to deny, based on significant conflicts for continued deliberation on a date and time certain. The second is, the third is to close the public hearing, deliberate and direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings for a first reading in a reopened public hearing on a date and time certain. Let's talk about that option. What, what happens if that is the option that we choose, option three?
Option three, without the EC.
Yeah.
So.
Give me a timeline on that, not, not timeline, but the sequencing.
Well, staff would ask for, you know, sort of a straw poll in choosing that option. It wouldn't be a final decision, of course, because the board would need an ordinance to formally approve the application. If that were the board's direction, though, staff would work with the applicant in drafting the ordinance itself and, and preparing findings, supporting that ordinance. We would return to the board with that ordinance. The option here in the ACM says a date and time certain. However, I think the, the applicant's procedural objection letter's been entered into the record now, if I'm not mistaken. And, and so the applicant has noted that they have no issue with, you know, just working through this deliberately and not necessarily coming back for a date and time certain. Staff is amenable to that so that we have more time to work on the ordinance and findings.
So that motion might sound like I move to close the public hearing and direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings for a first reading and reopen, and reopen public hearing, without the balance of that.
That, that, that could be a motion, Commissioner. We also have discussed the, the need for whether an ordinance needs to be read in during a public hearing or not. The applicant is objected to that process, as you know. I think, I mean, league, I think the board could go either way on that. You know, goal, goal one of the statewide planning program is citizen involvement, and so, you know, reading in an ordinance during a public hearing could be seen as best practice, you know, and not just for this, you know, application, but for future applications. On the other hand, there's nothing, it seemed, it appears that bars the, the board from, you know, reading in an ordinance outside of a public hearing. So either one of those options could be feasible.
Very good. Then, as I, as I explore that, Chair, if I may, so option three, the first line is to close the public hearing. So that then would be to not close the public hearing, just as direct staff to prepare an ordinance?
Sorry, the public hearing is currently closed.
That's what I thought, so.
So if you wanted, if the board wanted staff to return at a later date with, for first reading of an ordinance, then the board could either choose to reopen, move to reopen the public hearing for that purpose, or simply to return to the board at a future date for a, for a noticed, a noticed meeting.
So then the motion might sound like I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings for a first reading in a reopened public hearing period, and then we would read the ordinance during a public hearing, and the public would have opportunity to testify and to sub, put more things before us, or place before, what, before us, whatever that terminology was. what, before us, whatever that terminology was. And so that would give the greatest opportunity for more input regarding a, action that the board is taking today and it wouldn't actually seal the deal on a yes. I mean, the ordinance has to be passed, right, in order to move forward with the, uh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Technical question, Ms. Davies, is that, does that fix our extra letters that we currently have sitting there? If it-
Yeah, so if the motion is going to be to reopen the hearing, um, I think what I would probably recommend is that you're accepting the bill close letter and you're also going to provide the opponents a period of time to respond to it.
Is that a period of time we need to specify?
We should, yeah.
Is there a customary period of time that's in your, that we do?
I would, I mean, generally in like more permit situations, it could be seven, seven, seven or fourteen, fourteen, seven. Um, I think I would probably suggest two weeks.
Okay.
Because we're going to be, if we're moving toward another open hearing, then I would just say two weeks to provide time to, for anyone really to respond to the bill close letter.
Yes, Commissioner Fard.
Thank you. So procedurally, we, we haven't concluded this meeting nor have we taken action on an ordinance, so it is not too late to entertain a motion to reject the letters, which would then potentially change the trajectory of what the next steps might be.
Yeah, if you're going to reject the letters, I think Commissioner Farr's motion is still what would be the, the direction you're going. It just doesn't address the open record period in the bill close letter.
Commissioner Fard, do you mind telling me your thought process on that? It's interesting. So I just kind of like know more of what you think about that.
Uh, I just wanted to make sure, per, order of operations, that we were doing things in the way that made sense and depending what the intent, um, as Commissioner Farr had indicated, he might be interested in a motion around rejecting the letters from the record, but then if we move to another hearing, then we're reopening the record and so just trying to get my hand, my, uh, get a handle on the, the best order of operations and what is trying to be achieved here.
Yeah, and I would say as far as, you know, avoidance of risk, if you're going to reopen the hearing, I think the best option would be to go ahead and take the bill close letter in and allow response to it. Um, that was probably, given, given that the hearing is going to be opened later, that would be the safest route.
Yes, Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Then, uh, the motion would sound like, I'm, I'm just making certain that I say the right words, should I make a motion? Uh, move to, uh, direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings for a first reading and a reopened public hearing to be reopened at such and such a time and closed 14 days later, if that were the, the, or is the public hearing opened as soon as the motion is passed?
So here's what I'm thinking. That you're moving to direct staff to prepare an ordinance and support, and supporting findings for approval, um, extending the record for the sole purpose of allowing response to the bill close letter for 14 days, um, and return to the board for a reopen hearing, um, for a first reading or depending on whether you want the date certain or not, leave that in or out.
The staff would prefer not a date certain in order to give more flexibility on preparation.
It sounds like that was what applicant was okay with.
Okay. Then I'm prepared with a motion.
Please, Commissioner Farr.
Uh, Chair, I move to, uh, uh, direct staff to pre, uh, to prepare an ordinance for approval, uh, with findings, with findings for approval for a first reading and a reopened public hearing, um, to be, uh, for, specifically for response to the Mr. Close letter, which is in the, currently in the record, um, with a 14 day opening of the public hearing.
Record.
Excuse me, record.
Open record.
Thank you.
14 days.
And, um, and for staff to return, uh, with-
To a reopened hearing.
To a reopened hearing. Now, can anybody read that back or shall I try that again?
Try that again.
Okay. Then, uh, what I'd like to do is, uh, move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings for approval and a reopened public record for 14 days and return to a reopened public hearing without a date or time certain.
With the clarification that the open record period is only for, um, persons who have participated to respond to the bill close letter.
Did I not say that?
Not in the motion itself.
Then, uh, let's, let's do that again and, and, uh, to anybody listening, uh, we're going to get this right. I, I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings for approval with a reopened public record for response to Mr. Close's letter and exclusively for respondents who have previously entered items into the record. And staff return, um, without a date and time certain.
For a reopened hearing.
For, with a reopened public hearing.
One second.
All right, we have a motion on the table that I would love to spell back, but I'm finding it difficult. Uh, and I'm going to, maybe I might have to paraphrase it and then get specific. How would that sound? Uh, the motion is to move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance and supporting findings for an approval, extending the records, uh, for, uh, Bill Close's letter to be included in a 14 day open public record period and for staff to return for a reopened hearing. Is that brief and complete enough?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so is there any discussion to the motion? See lots of writing, lots of thinking. Appearing there is no discussion to the motion, I will, um, call for the vote and this is not a roll call vote, this is a, um, a nay vote. All those in favor of the motion on the table, please indicate by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes three to two. And, um, it's the motion that moves to direct staff to prepare an ordinance and supporting findings for approval and extending the record for the purpose of including the Bill Close letter in a 14 day open public record for staff to return for the reopened hearing at a date and time to be determined.
Does that assume response to the Mr. Close letter also? Do I presume that? Thank you.
All right, so I think the last thing that we need to talk about too, as I believe Mr. Carsley, that we need to talk about is if approving, the board will need to determine whether to allow, limit, or prevent new conflicting issues within the impact area through separate environment, social, economic, and, and, uh, energy findings. Is that where we're at now?
Yeah, I think that's accurate, Chair. Um, trying to, just give me a moment. Yeah, so if the board approves, um, then yeah, those, those, uh, an EC addressing, uh, staff and, staff would have to prepare findings for the board's consideration, uh, addressing, uh, potential future conflicting uses within the impact area of the approved mine site. Um, so previously, uh, this was sort of, uh, you know, an issue that wasn't, uh, considered too much. The applicant did not request that any, um, uh, limits, uh, on conflicting uses be, uh, assigned. Um, and staff, of course, agreed with that, uh, if the board moves forward with approval. Um, however, the applicant's introduced, uh, a big game management plan that, uh, you know, requires on the ground habitat improvement prescriptions, uh, that, uh, could potentially, uh, be conflicted with if areas of that property are, you know, either developed or, you know, used not, uh, consistently with those habitat prescriptions. Um, so this is sort of an open question, um, in a way, but it's something that the board should consider. The way, um, I would recommend the board look at it, uh, would be considering, uh, allowed uses within the forest zones. Uh, I think in this case, it's, uh, largely F2 zones, uh, within the impact area outside of the mining boundary itself, uh, where those habitat improvements are proposed. Um, the board may find that, uh, future conflicting use, or future uses would not conflict with, uh, with the big game management plan, um, or the board might find that there are conflicting uses, uh, but to allow, limit, or prohibit them. So hopefully that's a, an acceptable starting point.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, the, the board needs to consider basically, uh, th- three things when concerning this EC report, whether or not we're going to require it. That we're considering the allowed uses in the F2 zones and in respective to his big game management plan, what that would look like as included in the EC plan. Um, we could opt to not, uh, require it at all in the future, that all conflicts would be acceptable according to the approval. Or we could, number three, there are some con, conflicts potentially in the future, but we would address those limitations, uh, with an EC plan at another date. Is that what I'm hearing you say as well?
Can you repeat the last part, Chair?
Yes, I'd love, yeah, that, that there, the, the last one, I think I heard you were saying was that there, uh, with the EC plan, we could put forth that if there are potential conflicts in the future, we would then, I, I guess, identify those and, and limit those under an EC covering?
You would identify any conflicting uses, um, i- i- if there are conflicting uses and then beyond that, you would choose whether to, um, allow them, uh, limit them or prohibit them.
Are those conflicting uses something that we get to determine today or is that something that the mining operation, once it starts, if it does, or identify it at a later date and then we require something? I'm, I'm, uh, because I'm, I obviously, the two of us are sitting here trying to think about what would be the potential conflicts in the future and I don't even have a starting point for that, to be honest.
Yeah, that's, that's fair enough, Chair. Um, the, um, the ordinance would likely have to, um, have findings that address this issue. Um, so, I, you know, it, it may be, um, yeah, it may be in the board's best interest to, uh, uh, yeah, I don't know. Uh, I mean, it might be in the best interests of the board to consider whether they believe there are any conflicting uses in the first place. Um, beyond that, um, the board can deliberate on, uh, you know, what, you know, how those should interact with the plan. This was not something that was addressed in the application and, you know, we, we just received this big game management plan kind of at the 11th hour, so we're, we're sort of dealing with it in stride, so.
That sounds like a thousand pages worth of documents. Forgive me. Yeah, uh, so, uh, I, I guess so, i- i- is there an option to where the board could, uh, move forward with the motion that's been, uh, approved and come back to this once you get an opportunity to go through the motion and figure kind of where we're at? Or is this something that we need to do today? And Rachel Sorslev is coming to the table.
Amber.
Amber, I'm sorry, Amber Belt, I got it.
We're late in the day. Um, just wanted to offer a suggestion and I was just a- asking, um, County Council, Ann Davies, her opinion of this as well, um, is if it would be helpful at all, um, just a suggestion to continue deliberations, um, so that we could discuss what would be in the draft, um, ordinance and findings that staff would prepare and then bring back to the board. If it would be helpful to have an intermediate continued deliberations, if you will.
Continued now or so it's going to now?
Uh, to a later date and, and possibly after the, I don't know, looking at County Council, after that 14 day period of time to-
Just to allow, I think the understanding was that, that staff would have a better idea from the board, like what those findings need to look like, right?
If I may, Chair, would that affect the wording of the ordinance, uh, excuse me, of the motion that's already been passed? Um, that it doesn't need, that it doesn't need to be adjusted, it just pushes the timeline out on that?
Yeah.
Because I'm fine with the, with more deliberation on this.
Well, maybe figure, maybe before we do a motion, figure out whether there are other people who are interested in deliberating further.
Well, we've already done a motion, so we'd have to either retract it or do another one, um, in a, in addition or supplementary one.
Yeah, I could do an amendment maybe or just add on to it.
Or we don't require one. We don't require an EC when, with, with the approval of the quarry. That's also an option, yeah?
The, the EC for conflicting uses, I believe, is required if approving the mining. Um, it's whether or not the board finds that there are any conflicting uses, um, that's the first step. So the EC, EC findings will be necessary. EC findings were made, um, uh, in the past, uh, during, uh, previous board actions. Um, the board ultimately denied this applica, or a similar application in 2021. Before that, the ordinances were, uh, signed by the board that, you know, had these EC findings in them, uh, that declined to limit any conflicting uses, um, in the impact area. So as far as I understand, this EC process is still required. Uh, we still have to make findings in support of an ordinance, uh, but the board, you know, could find that no conflicting uses exist with respect to mining and the associated big game management.
So what we could do is, is we could do another motion, um, and, um, if we have, I don't know if we have dates that are available to have further deliberations or not.
Chair, while we wait, I would-
Yes, go ahead.
One of the purposes of my motion was to move this forward.
Yeah.
And, uh, in delaying the, the, any movement on this, you know, we're just kind of extending what has already been a long period. So if we have a discussion regarding monitoring that needs to happen, for instance, or regarding the, uh, the scenic corridor that needs to happen, um, if we somehow need to wrap that into the ordinance and into the motion, I'm fine with that, but I'd prefer that we move forward today without further deliberation.
Oh, Mr. Carsley, go ahead.
Uh, so sorry, um, so another option might be for, uh, this would require an amended motion, I would presume, but, uh, the board could, um, uh, modify kind of the open record period that has already been opened, uh, for purposes of briefing on this issue. Um, so it's something where it, that, that might avoid the need to, uh, come back for a separate deliberations meeting and we could, you know, just return.
Or change it from 14 days to 28 days maybe or-
And, and the, yeah, and the subject of, you know, why the, the record period's left open or-
So I could, uh, make that as a friendly amendment to my own motion? Or the second could?
Um, I think so. And would that call for a revote?
Yes.
Okay.
So then I, I would move to direct staff to, uh, change the ordinance, amend my motion to read. I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for approval with a reopen-
read, move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for approval with a reopened public hearing for a period of?
Record, public record.
Record for 28 days. Is 28 days an adequate number?
I mean, I hate to do this, but I'd like to set out as, you know, articulating what's the, what's the first open record period, and because applicant's going to want to have their final rebuttal at the end. So what we could do is we could say 14 days, I mean, I think we're just opening it back up at that point, unless we want to articulate it's just your issue. Is that what you're thinking?
That's what I was thinking, based on the fact that the open record seemed to be limited to addressing the objection letter submitted by the applicant, but that's.
Can you articulate the expanded scope of the?
Yeah, so the expanded scope of the, the open record period would be to address EC findings related to potential conflicting uses within the impact area of the tentatively approved mining site pursuant to OAR 6600230040, and I think 0050.
So then I'd move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for approval with a reopened open record to include, to address ECEE findings related to positive conflicting uses within the mining zone, and return to the board with a reopened public hearing. According to the OR, OAR, what is, 6623230040 and 50?
6600230040 and 0050.
6600230040 and 0050.
Yeah, and let's articulate that the open record period is open for those two issues, the EC and the response to the Bill Close letter, for 14 days, and then 14 more days for the applicant to have final rebuttal.
Do I need to restate that, or is that going to be inherent? I can restate it.
Yeah, go ahead and restate it.
I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for approval with a reopened open record for 14 days in order to address ECEE findings related to postit, possible conflicting uses within the mining zone, and response to, and to include Mr. Close's letter, and a subsequent response from opponents, and return to, to a?
And then final rebuttal at 14 more days.
With a final rebuttal at 14 days beyond the 14 days, and return to a reopened public hearing. Okay.
Is there a second to the amended motion?
A second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Farr, and I'm going to please ask you, on my behalf, to restate that for the record. Oh, I'm sorry, discussion to the motion, is there discussion to the motion? Yes, Commissioner Buck.
I think we have a technical issue, which is, the prior motion was complete with a vote, so this isn't an amendment to that prior motion. I think the prior motion needs to be rescinded. I don't know exactly what Roberts Rules requires of that, but otherwise, if this passes, we have two past conflicting motions.
For safety, I will make a motion to rescind my previous motion, which passed three to two. Look for a second and a vote on that.
And I think the way you articulated it stands alone, this, the second one. So once you rescind, you have to rescind the first one.
Okay, so we're backing up just a little bit. We're having a motion on the floor to rescind Commissioner Farr's first motion, which was stated, moving to direct staff to prepare an ordinance and supporting findings for approval, extending the record for the Bill Close letter for a 14-day open public record, and for staff to return for a reopened hearing. That motion has, is on the floor to be rescinded. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, motion to rescind is on the floor with a second. Is there any discussion to the motion? Yes, Commissioner?
No, we have two motions on the floor. Each has been moved and seconded.
So, we will proceed with the rescind first, and then move to the next one afterward, and I think that should be okay?
I would defer to County Council on this end, I'm sorry.
I thought I was done for today.
Yeah.
I think that's right, I mean, I think you vote on the rescission unless some other commissioners object to that process. Pretty sure you can rescind it, and then you'd have the other one.
Counsel?
If I rescind my second motion, then we can just reintroduce that motion.
Start it over and scratch.
With approval of the second, I will rescind my second motion, in, until the completion of the vote on the first motion.
So we're voting now on two rescinded motions. The first motion for rescension has already been stated and seconded. We have had discussion to the motion, so on the first motion rescinded, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of rescinding?
The other way around, rescind the second one first.
Rescind the second one first, and the first one?
Then rescind the first one, then reintroduce the second one.
Wow, they don't teach you this in gym class, do they? Okay, then we are rescinding the second motion by Commissioner Farr. We've had discussion and a second to rescind that second motion.
Which has not yet received a vote, but.
Which is?
Right, that was never voted on.
Was never voted on.
The second one was never voted on, that's what we're choosing to rescind first.
And now we're rescinding the first one.
I think you're still on the vote to rescind.
Yeah, we're still, yeah. All right, so, we're rescind, we're on the vote to rescind the first one, right now, that's where we're at. All those in favor rescinding the first motion signify with an aye.
There's discussion?
We had discussion already.
I'm confused about exactly what we are rescinding, because?
We're rescinding the very first motion that Commissioner Farr moved to direct staff to prepare an ordinance and supporting findings for approval to extend the record, to include the Bill Close letter for a 14-day open record period, and for the staff to return.
We have a motion on the floor at the moment. That's not the very first.
I think Mr. Commissioner Farr just revoked that or rescinded it.
I rescinded that, which didn't require a vote, just an approval of the second. So it's rescinded.
So the second was approval of the rescinded the second one, so now we're moving back to the first one for a motion to rescind that, so we can start over. We've had discussion already for, call for the vote. All those in favor of rescinding the first motion signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes three to two to rescind the first motion from Commissioner Farr. So we're at ground zero once again, for entertaining a new motion for the approval or denial of the, what's been called the Hazel Dell Quarry Zone Four application process. Do I have a motion for the floor? Yes, Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Chair. I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings for approval with a reopened open record for 14 days in order to address ECEE findings related to possible conflicting uses in the mining zone, and to allow rebuttal to Mr. Close's letter, which is in the record, and return to the board with a, in a reopened public hearing.
14 days, so the first open record period is 14 days for what you just articulated, and then 14 additional days for the applicant to provide final rebuttal.
So to a reopen, open record for 14 days, with an additional 14 days to allow for a rebuttal.
Applicant final rebuttal.
Applicant final rebuttal, and return to a reopened public hearing.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Farr, and I will let you repeat the motion, and been seconded by Commissioner, Vice Chair Senega, so go ahead and repeat the motion.
It's a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings for approval with a reopened open record for 14 days, with a subsequent 14 days to allow for rebuttal from the opponent, to address ECEE findings related to possible conflicting uses in the mining zone, and return to a public, reopen public hearing.
I'm gonna have to go back to Counsel Davies. She shook her head a little bit.
Yeah, I just want to be really clear that the first 14-day period, that the record is left open, is for the easy material and for a response to the Bill Close letter. So 14 days from today, those responses are allowed to come into the record, and then 14 days from that date, the applicant has the opportunity for final rebuttal.
That was my intention. Did that, was that captured in the motion? Or shall I?
It is now.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, is there discussion to the motion? Yes, Vice Chair.
You're doing great, Taylor. We're getting there. I did have a question, though. After going through the paperwork, and I can't find it now, I was, I was kind of scrambling, but I thought, I didn't know we were required or had to put an EC in if, if we tentatively approved. Why'd that change?
That's a good question, Commissioner. So the, the EC that was the subject of conversation, perhaps it would be beneficial if I shared the PowerPoint again.
Please.
Let me just do that. So, if we go up to step five, or actually, I can show here, so you see steps one through four cascading down there, and if the board had determined that all conflicts were not minimized, you take that slide from four to five, down to the right there. And that's the EC that's been the topic of most of the conversation while we've been discussing this Goal Five rule, and that EC is specifically the mineral and aggregate Goal Five rule, which addresses the consequences of making a decision on the mine regardless of whether conflicts have been minimized or not. So that's what we've really focused on for the most part. There's this other EC, these other EC findings that need to be made whenever mining is allowed, though. So whenever you reach those step sixes on the, on the slide there, there's, and there's EC findings that are baked into that process as well, so.
Got it.
Hopefully, that's clear.
Perfect, thank you.
Any more discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion presented by Commissioner Farr in the extended access that it is, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes three to two, and please repeat the motion for the record again, Commissioner Farr, if you would.
I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance with findings for approval with a reopened open record for 14 days for response to Mr. Close's letter, and to address ECEE findings related to post, possible conflicting uses in the mining zone, with an additional 14 days for the, for the opponent's final rebuttal, and return to the board for a reopened public record.
Final rebuttal.
Applicant's final rebuttal, thank you, and return to the board for a, with a reopened public hearing.
Good, that motion passed three to two. Mr. Rickoff.
And just for clarity, that would be returning to the board on February 25th at 1:30 PM.
February 25th, 1:30 PM.
I did not specify time certain, but that is, that is your purview to determine.
28 days.
So, sorry, just for clarification, that, the February 25th date was just the end of the open record period. That was the date the applicant's final rebuttal on that open record period would, would be due. I don't believe we determined a date and time certain, so.
So you want more time.
We're not going to do a time certain. So a date, time to be determined. Okay, good. Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order? We swam some upstream rapids. Very well done, all. Thank you, Mr. Tether Carsley, Ann Davies, and Rachel, Amber, talk on it, I'm sorry, I've got Rachel on my head. Amber, thank you very much for your time and your expertise. Appreciate you all very much. Wow, moving right along. We come to a little bit of county administration, and Greg finally gets to say something that makes sense. Go ahead, Greg.
We, we hope, that is not guaranteed. Thank you, Chair. First, in terms of announcements, Commissioner Farr, thank you for your request back during remonstrance to talk a little bit about the direction the county staff should be taking in to respond to the federal executive orders. I'm sure you noted, as did I, the number of individuals who reflected upon the county's mission and vision as they addressed their concerns today. One of the things that Steve Mokrysky did in his communication to the organization yesterday was rely on those same mission, vision, values for his, his work. What the protocols that we have put in place really requires that any county staff person that is being contacted, whether it's regarding information or individuals, they contact the county administrations office, where Steve Mokrysky and county council will assess the request and see if it is in compliance with the state's sanctuary law, and will help the staff work accordingly. That will be a phone line that is monitored 24/7, and will really be a protocol in place for every staff person, with the exception for departments that have already either established their protocols, or will be establishing their protocols, as you can imagine, and as you heard last week, the Sheriff's Office has a longstanding protocol in terms of responding to federal immigration requests. So the compliance is set out in the Sheriff's Office General Orders. Health and Human Services really works with their compliance officer on all manner of legal requests that come through. The, that permanent structure of a compliance office is really well-suited to deal with this. So the tools are in place. I received notification as we met that the line is up and working and in the hands of staff, so that we are ready to go on the, when it comes to responding to any federal immigration requests. Undoubtedly, it'll be a developing issue as we hear more and as we understand more, but is, in terms of, for the foreseeable future, that's how we'll be operating. Does that meet your needs, Commissioner?
Absolutely, Mr. Rickoff, and Mr. Mokrysky covered it pretty succinctly in both of the emails that were sent yesterday. A question that I have is regarding, I'm, I'm the frontline staff, somebody flashes a badge, somebody flashes a badge to me and I'm driving, they say, "Get out of the car", I get out of the car. So if somebody flashes a badge at you in the moment, I just pay attention to that staff needs to be prepared for how do I respond in that situation?
Yes, thank you, and the, the county administrators relying on directors to work through and ensure that staff are trained in understanding that they do have permission to refer the individual, the federal authority to the county administration office. So training will follow that, but I don't know if any department yet that probably has that set up, unless they've already have existing policies, such as the Sheriff's Office, but we'll be working on that to.
And I trust the process is in place with the, with the existing system. You know, I might suggest that a script be provided, so that we're using the same words, no matter where, where the, and if it's somebody who was hired yesterday as a 520, you know, that they have that script also, because we can't be certain, I can't be sitting here, who is going to be asked for admittance. And I, and so just understanding that, that the person with the least experience is likely to be the person who gets asked first.
Point well taken, point well taken. I have asked Steve Adams to join me for a couple additional announcements on the legislative front, including the communication that just went forward to the state legislative leaders to look at repurposing of funds, and of course, you've been hearing for the last 24 hours now, the pause in federal funding, and wanted him to share what we're doing to understand what that pause looks like, and what exactly is at stake for, for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Rickoff. Chair Leval, commissioners, a pleasure to join you. So an update closer to home in Salem, so at the direction of the board, at my last appearance in briefing you on the minor updates that we had to the legislative agenda for the, for the state legislative session, we have followed. We have followed up with a letter to the leadership of both chambers, as well as the co-chairs of Joint Ways and Means for repurposing funds previously appropriated to Lane County for a multi-use facility at the Lane County Fairgrounds. Using those resources specifically, of course, successful in this process, for the Behavioral Health Stabilization Center. We're attempting to secure those funds as early in session as we possibly can, as you know, to try to close the capital gap that we know that we have. So we're working currently through the kind of technical challenges associated with that. And I think the county administrator was updating you on some of that process as well. And so happy, and I think my colleague Vanessa Cornwall, our intergovernmental relations manager, provided you with a copy of that letter. Pivoting to the federal side, so certainly, as Mr. Rickoff indicated last evening, the Office of Management and Budget within the Executive Office of the President instructed all federal agencies to cease funds as well as additional dispersments of funds in a particular guidance effective 5:00 p.m. today, is what the guidance was, and particularly asked agencies specifically to go through a very detailed spreadsheet to provide a lot of information about each line of federal spending associated with grants. And so today's been a fairly confused day, so we're past 5:00 p.m. now on the East Coast. Multiple states attorneys general, including our own, have intervened in a lawsuit, and so a federal judge has put a stay on that particular guidance to federal agencies until Monday of next week. We've continued, we've reviewed all of the line items against the, we do a thing in our audit every year, and it is a CIFA, a Schedule of Federal Funds, ostensibly. All $90 million of federal funds on that list from our audit in 2024 were included on the review list. There's been a fair amount of reporting throughout the day. The White House Press Secretary came out and tried to offer some clarity. Certainly this morning, there was questions regarding whether or not this impacts Pell Grants or federal student loans or other kinds of direct aid. And we've been really trying to understand, does this impact core county operations, including Medicaid processing? So all of the Medicaid portals have been down all day, and it's not entirely clear if it's related to this process or if it's regular maintenance, which does happen from time to time. So it has been, it's been an interesting day from a federal funds perspective. Happy to answer any questions. Staff are kind of articulating and reporting in on what they're hearing from funders. So we've heard from our, we've heard from parks, we've heard from the District Attorney's Office, we've heard from Human Services Division, and we've heard from Public Works on federal funds in which their grant managers have indicated to them that they're pausing any additional flows of dollars. So we're on pause and trying to monitor the situation, and we'll keep you apprised of what we hear.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner.
Lots of questions, serious concerns about our funding at this point. I have a specific question on healthcare specifically, since you mentioned that those websites for Medicaid have been down. I mean, we continue to see patients, and we will be racking up that billing in the meantime, because we have not changed our policy to see those folks that need healthcare through our federally qualified health centers. So the risk is we're, we may or may not get reimbursed for that, or if we do, we don't know when at this point. It sounds like a lot of these policies that are being rolled out by the new administration are unclear and conflicting at this moment, and not everybody fully understands where it's going or where it's leading. What kind of strain does that put on our budget?
Chair Leval, Commissioner Buck, I think that is unknown. Certainly, the sheriff shared this morning, he learned from his federal funds, so he is the fiduciary for funds coming into county government for our treatment courts, and he has indicated to them, shared that they're basically acting from this point forward on their own kind of risk, and I think we are as well, when it comes right across the board. I think most folks operating under federal funds, now this has been stayed until Monday, so presumably, we continue for the next few days, but I think we should monitor this very carefully.
As a follow-up, we won't be able to do this, financially speaking, for an extended amount of time without huge financial risk to the county. So my concern is if we don't get clarifying understanding within the next few days or prior to this judge's stay, how do we get informed as soon as possible about the impacts to the county? Obviously, we have a Tuesday meeting next week, and I suspect you will be here with an update. But my concern is that we need to stay informed, if not every week, probably more often than just at our weekly meetings, given the huge financial and service impact to our community.
Chair Leval, Commissioner Buck, yes. We, the executive team has developed a working rhythm to be looking at the implications of federal acts, and we're meeting at this point several times a week as things change. And we will figure out what that strategy is to keep you informed in terms of the ongoing impacts of issues. I think one of the, if there's solace anywhere in all of this, solace anywhere, it's the fact that there are agencies of every possible size and description across this country that are equally impacted here. And I do think there will be resolution of some sort, but we will make sure that we keep you in the loop in terms of whatever strategic vision we have as we move forward.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Farr?
Just an exclamation point. We serve 30, close to 30,000 lives, who, many, predominantly Medicaid. And these 30,000 human beings in Lane County that rely on us for medical services are being held hostage at this point in time. And I don't use that word lightly, you know? I mean, we have 30,000 people who rely on our medical centers for their primary care, which includes ongoing care for chronic illness, for instance. And, you know, I can't lose track of that, you know? Two or three or four days, five, six days, we can't afford any of that. So elevating it to people's attention as much as possible, because these orders are coming down from the top rung. And this is an effect that is affecting people's lives, men, women, children, human beings all over Lane County.
Commissioner Farr, thank you. I've had the conversation, I think, with all of you in terms of where I am in my career and the great good fortune I have of having a chance to work here at the county. And we have talked about the quality of the human beings that work alongside us, be they doctors, nurses, therapists, parole officers. The individuals that have chosen to do this work do it because of deep, deep care, and they share our fear and discomfort in this moment. We have people doing this work for all the right reasons and never lose sight of the clients we serve. And to have them put at jeopardy, and honestly, to have the jobs of those doctors, nurses, therapists, and parole officers put at jeopardy, these are indeed scary times.
And we have people midway through processes, whether it be cancer process, whatever it may be, who are going to be cut off.
Could well be.
Commissioner Trigger? Thank you. Thank you for that, Commissioner Farr, for putting that human face in. We do absolutely serve 30,000 people in our health centers, and in fact, we serve 380,000 people, really, Lane County-wide, with programs where you cannot disentangle the braided funds by which we serve those folks in many, many ways. So this is, this is irresponsible, is the politest word I can come up with for the action of this top rung of the federal administration. Don't expect an answer now, but when you come back to brief us next, would love any assessment of impacts of contracts that we may have signed that rely on the federal funds that we have been promised, that we may not be able to make good on, what kind of risk exposure there may be in that. I'm sure there's many, many other implications to this, but this is another thing, because you said they're freezing not just new obligations, but dispersments. So this federal government has made promises to this local government that it seems they are potentially willing to break, and we have made promises to community organizations and other municipal entities, perhaps, that hinge on the federal government keeping its promises, which we now can't rely on them doing. I'd love to hear a little bit of an analysis of that when you can get to it.
Chair Leval and Commissioner Trigger, we will indeed, we're evaluating the executive orders through the lens of impact county operations specifically and county concerns, and we'll add that to our process.
Anyone else? Concerning times, thank you for being who you are and what you do and keeping us abreast, and for all those folks out there that work in those areas that would be affected, our hearts and our prayers are with them. And perhaps the word this morning of doing the impossible may come sooner than we think, but I think that Lane County has always proven to get through the tough times in the most integrous fashion, and that's what we'll continue to do as a board. We'll support you in every way we can, so I appreciate you very much, Steve. Thank you very much. We're on to commissioners' business. Is there any announcements from the commissioners? Kind of a somber mood, I'm sorry to say, but yes. Commissioner Farr?
Just, and while Mr. Adams is still in the room, we had a discussion last week with Representative Nathanson's office regarding the impending sale of the UP properties in Lane County, impending turnover of the UP properties in Lane County, specifically inside the city limits of Eugene and West Eugene, to a short line, to a smaller railroad. It's going to have major impacts on public safety, and we are working, our office is working closely with Representative Nathanson and with the city of Eugene to provide a response to UP and to the decision-making bodies there regarding what it actually will do to services in Lane County and to the impact on public safety in Lane County. Vanessa Cornwall and Steve Adams are working very closely on this, and they're responding very, very quickly to every move that's being made.
When you suggested, when you made mention of UP, that's Union Pacific Railroad Properties.
Yeah, thank you. Union Pacific.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no announcements, is there any future board assignments that you want to make your press? Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Rickoff, as we spoke about earlier, I was wondering if we could get a staff presentation on LARs, what that would look like to get some of them that have been turned into thoroughfares to other neighborhoods, maybe brought into maintenance rotation, or, I've spoken with Sasha and Becky Taylor a couple of times, and it's time to start a bigger conversation about Eugene taking some of those roads, also in Springfield and some of the other cities. So UGB, LARs also, is going to be a subcategory of that, if I get head nods.
Those LARs would be referring to the public as local access roads that are not maintained by the city or the county, but by the property owners that are abutting them. And the UGB is the urban growth boundary, within the limits of our urban growth boundaries of our cities and incorporated areas. So yeah. Commissioner Buck?
Just to comment on that, I'm in full support, but we did have a full, I mentioned this earlier, I think in the public comments, several years ago, we had a full review of them. And it might be nice to have as part of this, that, a portion at least of that to be presented, because we have new members since that happened.
Good, awesome. Anything else? No other board requirements or assignments? Is there a review of what you have there, Mr. Rickoff?
Okay, I'll start with, thank you, Chair. I will start with Clean Lane. Items 7A, B, and C today have been moved to Tuesday, February 4, and they will be preceded by an executive session to address the issues that are best handled in executive session. But you'll see those three items return. The local access roads had on my list, and I did have that bifurcation between, you know, a general conversation on local access roads and local access roads within the UGB. So I don't know if that will take the form of two presentations, or whether both can be handled at the same time. I'll defer to Public Works on that. I did have a third item that came up during remonstrances that Commissioner Trigger brought up, asking staff to work with community on operational and administrative elements, ensuring that Lane County is a sanctuary county. The idea being that there's work that needs to be done at the staff level and not necessarily was that larger policy umbrella focus, that you were looking for staff to step forward and start making those connections and start figuring out the details. You described it as the how of the work, I believe. I didn't know if there was head nods on that, or if that was anything that we should be pursuing.
Yeah, it seems to be an adjunct to existing assignment.
Yeah.
Yes, there's an assignment to come back to that will cover the overarching strategy, but it sounded to me like you wanted to ensure that we were making connections and starting to do that staff-to-client work.
So is that in the form of a board assignment, or is that in form of just a report back?
I think, well, I think I understand it as a report back.
Yeah, it means staff direction. It's basically directing that the implementation of the recognition, that the implementation of the real body of work, of effective work, is freeing staff and allowing them to have the resources they need to actually start working and engaging with impacted communities, so that the answers that get brought back about what is needed are reflective of that, and that the, it's just the deeper layer of the assignment and making sure that the staff knows they have our full support and direction to commit the resources necessary to do the work in community.
Yeah.
So a refinement to an existing assignment.
And I can read those existing assignments, it's very brief. One is to provide a report on state bias and hate statutes. What are the laws in Oregon regarding bias and hate? And the second is to report back on the continuation of efforts to outline what we're doing in Lane County regarding diversity, equity, inclusion, DEI issues, particularly regarding sanctuary for our LGBTQIA2S residents, and what can be done to strengthen Lane County's position as a sanctuary county. So it seems like just another arch of that.
Thank you. That's what I have.
Good deal. Mr. Rickoff, thank you for helping us out today. You did a wonderful job. Appreciate your presence. You navigated us through some tough times, and I appreciate it very much. Is there any other business for the good of the order? Seeing none, our next scheduled board meeting is for Tuesday, February 4, at 9:00 a.m. At the sound of my gavel, we'll be adjourned.